This is the planning board meeting of July 5th, 2016. And it's at 5:00 o'clock tonight. And this meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 15. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're here tonight for a continued public hearing for the Borrego Solar Systems special permit on 19C Ward Street to allow a ground-mounted solar power generating facility of approximately 2.77 megawatts in a residential agricultural district. And so this is a continued, continuance of the public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Richard Cirque for the record, together with Zach Farkas from Borrego. There were two issues that were left outstanding at the conclusion of our previous session. One was the desire for an opinion from the Airport Commission with respect to the consequences, if any, of glare from the panels. And I believe you have an email that was sent from the Airport Commission to you indicating that their lack of opposition to the project as proposed. The second issue that you left open for tonight was whether there should be a second vehicle gate on the west side of the array to match the vehicle gate on the east side. And we have provided a plan that shows just that. And we forwarded it to Eric Germain at the Fire Department. And it's also been forwarded to you. So those were the two open issues according to my notes.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we could close the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you see in the memo that's from Jeanette White. Is she a representative at the town of Plymouth?
She works for Thomas Marr, who's the airport manager. And she was in touch with Thomas Marr. He was out of the office today, but he had responded, Mr. Marr had responded to her and to me. And Marlene asked for a direct email from the commission to her. And she sent that with under the authority of Mr. Marr.
Well, that would address the one concern I had about the glare and the access, the other gate was fine.
Anybody else have any questions? We could close the public hearing and then go on to further discussion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Borrego Solar Systems special permit 19C Ward Street.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
I see that there's a proposed motion in place. As you see, we have a discussion on the variance granted by the ZBA for frontage and side setbacks on the same project. I think we should have a discussion on the safety issue going, getting into that site. And if it directly impacts the neighborhood, I'm having an issue with it. The reason why I'm having an issue with it, the access is through complete easements. Some of the easements aren't in place as of yet.
They're not in place as of yet.
They are just easements coming into the site. It's a long roadway for our public safety to get into this area. So I'm pretty not, no disrespect, Marlene, I thought the motion was good to have here just to at least read. I'm not warm and fuzzy on closing this. I mean, voting on a motion tonight and having some problems trying to grasp around the safety issue of getting into the site. And I'm, well, we'll discuss the other thing on the discussion thing about the ZBA's decision, which I haven't read yet. They haven't filed it yet. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are.
But then we also have the issue of the, well, that was a ZBA issue too of the, you know, whether you feel the setbacks that had been allowed by the ZBA.
Yeah, I haven't seen their decision yet. I know they granted, from what the applicant has provided us for information, they've given them the frontage down to zero. And they've also granted encroachment of the 200-foot buffer that's required by the solar bylaw. I haven't seen the decision, so I can't really comment on it yet of how that, both of them I have a problem with.
Marlene?
So I do just want to caution the board a little bit that you have your role as the special permit granting authority under 5300 of the zoning bylaw. And I just, you also have certain rights under Chapter 40A, Section 17, as a municipal board or body, board, I think is the word in the act, to appeal other decisions. But I do want to, they're separate. And I don't want to confuse, I don't want to get these two things confused into one conversation. You have certain, you have a certain job as the special permit granting authority to make certain findings if you're able to issue a special permit or to not issue a special permit. And that's your decision. That it's a discretionary permit, it's not a by right use. That conversation you should have based on your jurisdiction. Any conversation you have on the zoning board's jurisdiction under their variance decision shouldn't be confused with your special permit decision.
I agree.
That's all I'm saying. You have the, you need to, right now on your agenda, you're under the special permit part of it. So if you can, if you can, like, keep the special permit conversation on track.
That was zipping.
With those, you know, with that criteria and those findings. And then, once you've had that discussion or decided to continue that discussion on longer, then talk about the variance separate. I know it's, I know it seems a little.
Backwards.
I know, and I know it seems a little, like, unnatural to not talk about the same project, not talk about the whole of the same project. But you have your jurisdiction, you have a permit you have to make a decision on at some point.
Okay. Could you read zoning bylaw 5300?
Sure. So 5330 is your criteria. You're under the solar bylaw, the planning board's the special permit granting authority or the SPGA, that's what you are. So, criteria, special permits may be granted by the SPGA upon its written determination that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. In addition to any criteria set forth in specific provisions of this bylaw, which in this case would be the solar bylaw, the determination shall include consideration of each of the following. 5331 is social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. 5332 is traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. 5333 is adequacy of utilities and other public services. 5334 is neighborhood character and social structure. 5335 are impacts on the natural environment. And 5336 is potential fiscal impacts, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. So those are, that's the criteria section of your, of 5300. The rest of it is, is the procedures. I'm not sure you want me to go into, like, the deadlines and everything right now.
No.
Okay.
Not at this time. Thank you.
So under 5332?
Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading.
Yeah.
Okay.
The safety issue is my concern on that. The traffic issue, we know that we're only going to have maybe a handful of trips up and down that throughout, throughout the year. I'm having a problem swallowing the safety issue going up there for municipal vehicles, Fire Department, Police Department, ambulance going up. It's all across easements. We're going, what was it, three quarters of a mile or a quarter of a mile down from the main road?
So my notes were that Mr. Smith testified that it was approximately a half mile.
Yeah, so that's quite a distance to go across a bunch of easements to get out there. If, it's a big if, but it's, something should happen. I'm just having a problem struggling, I've been struggling all weekend with it, trying to figure it out.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask, Marlene, we're discussing the variance, we're discussing the safety, we're discussing the frontage, or we've already voted on that, haven't we?
No. So the zoning board of appeals has made a decision on the variance. That's their jurisdiction. So they have issued a permit that varied the frontage and varied the sideline setback. That's, that's their job.
All right.
So you're.
So based on that, us not as a board going forward with that being okay, where do we stand?
So you also have to issue a special permit. They're independent. So this project needs a variance, needs the two variances which have been voted and approved by the zoning board. It also independently needs the special permit by the planning board. So you have to make your own decision on whether or not you can make the findings in 5300 and issue the special permit.
And those were the ones that you just read?
Yeah.
53, do you want them read again?
No.
You get it?
I get it. I just want to make sure that what we're discussing is.
Right.
Is relevant to what we're doing right now.
It is confusing.
I mean, we're basically here on our own time and making this, or hoping to make this happen, but I want to make sure I'm not confused on what we're discussing.
So the special permit needs a super majority of the planning board, so it would need all four votes to, a four-fifths vote to grant a special permit. So a solar, a large ground-mounted solar votec installation in your zoning bylaw is allowed in the residential agricultural district by special permit only. So, so in order to do this, the planning board has to grant this permit.
And there were, there were reasons that, there were things that we have to look at in this particular project, which Marlene went over. And one of them was access to the site. The other ones were, if you could just go over those again, please.
Sure.
These are the things that we have to look at.
Right, well, I guess I thought we already went there.
So your hearing, your hearing was continued until tonight, so you were still gathering your information. So you're, you just closed your hearing, you haven't made, this is your, now you get to move on to discussing it and eventually make a decision. But your hearing's been open to this point where you were still receiving stuff. So the first one is social, economic, or community needs served by the proposal. Second one is traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Third one is adequacy of utilities and other public services. Fourth one is neighborhood character and social structures. Fifth one is impacts on the natural environment. And sixth is potential fiscal impacts, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. So those are, those are the bylaw, the zoning bylaw special permit criteria in addition to all of the technical stuff we've been doing under the solar bylaw. So the operation and maintenance, the bond, all of those technical requirements are found in the, in the solar bylaw. But these are, these are requirements that you have to find too.
And so I guess what Will has expressed is, one of those that Marlene just talked about was, you know, access to the site. And he just didn't think that, being a half mile long, they didn't think that it was a safe access to the site.
The way that, the way that I'm reading it and the way that I'm trying to understand it and I'm trying to grab my head around it is, is that it's a long road, dirt road, through multiple easements to get to the site. And for me, for a safety issue, I'm having a hard time struggling with that to approve or give, give an approval for that, knowing that there's multiple easements just to get out there. I understand that the public safety officials that we have in town are okay with the turnarounds, the access, the additional gates, stuff like that. It's the length, the length in, across multiple easements is where I'm having a hard time getting past the requirements in our bylaw, I guess. And I'm bouncing off you guys, seeing what you're thinking.
And again, I hope this has to do with this discussion, but if we're making, if we're making a variance based on bringing the 200 feet back to 130, that's not this.
No, that's the ZBA.
Yep. So you're, that's the variance issued by the zoning board. You, as the special permit granting authority, are, you have to make a determination that benefits, that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to the site. That's, that's what you were, that's what you're doing tonight. That's your determination. The variance determination has been made using other criteria.
That's out of our hearing.
Yes.
Now, we don't have to approve this tonight. We have 90 days.
I mean, if you.
We have, we have time. I mean, we helped, we helped this to get more information. We have time, Mr. Chair, to bounce this back and forth and try to come up with a, this can't just be a Will thing. And I've been struggling with this for a while. I've been really digging into it for this weekend and really taking a look at the access and stuff. I'm just having a problem, as I'm going down the list of criterias and I'm checking them off, that one I can't check. I'm just having a problem checking it. You guys have any input towards it might help persuade me? I don't know. I, I'm just having an issue with, I know that we had this meeting trying to accommodate the closing of the hearing, get all the information that we need and to move forward for this, for the applicant and stuff. I know that that was our thing. I just can't get past.
And is this also the hearing based on boundaries? Bruce?
Yeah, we will look. Do we come up with the meets and bounds?
They will be added, they should be added to the new plan.
Were they on the new plan? Okay.
Yeah, we added the gate, we added the meets and bounds you requested to the plan. And then the second item that Mr. Cirque went over was the glare study.
You have any thoughts, Jim?
I kind of agree with Will because all the other solar projects that we've talked about, the safety has been the number one concern, that there is the accident. I know it's few and far between, but it only takes that one. And we've always tried to be on a side of caution on that. That seems to be the big sticking point. To me as well.
You want to, you guys want to digest this a little bit? We don't have to vote on it, we don't have to move on it right now.
Now, if we didn't vote on this tonight, we wouldn't move towards the next.
Yeah.
Thing on the agenda?
No, so these are, these are really, you have certain, you have a certain job to do under the zoning bylaw for the special permit. You also have certain rights under 40A, Section 17, as a municipal board. So they really are separate areas where you have every right, you have every right to essentially, you know, table the, table this special permit discussion, pick it back up later. But you can talk, you can talk about the fact that you have standing to appeal a variance. Yes, you can certainly do that.
I almost think that that's kind of necessary in order for everybody to, to understand what, what's going on here tonight and what our concerns are.
I just want to be comfortable with it. I'm not going to be here for 20-year lifespan of this. If I am, I'm not going to be that happy about it. So I'm sure people out there ain't going to be happy about it. But I just want to make sure that I'm comfortable in my own way that I can check that one last item off of our zoning bylaw that says, you know, access is going to be good. I got to get over that hurdle.
No, I think that is, that is important.
So if you, if the board wants to, you can bring this back for further discussion. And eventually you have to make a decision.
Yeah.
You can bring it back for further discussion. We can do that at your next meeting. Or we can do that, you can schedule another intervening, you know, another meeting to do that. But you do have, so the special permit deadlines, you do have 90 days from the close of the public hearing to render the decision. On your agenda, the deadlines that I track are, this is actually based on 90 days from the opening date of your public, because I don't necessarily know when you're going to close a public hearing, but this is just kind of a guide for me to, if we're getting close, then, you know, we need to talk about that. But.
And don't we have a concern for them fitting into and getting this for some kind of grant as well? I actually thought that the reason why we came here with it not being a regular meeting was for that purpose as well.
Well, they, on their last discussion, they had some timely timelines that, to meet requirements on their end for the net metering.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. On the net metering end, I understand that. And that was one of the biggest pushes to have this meeting. That and a couple of items that we wanted answered for us. I've been struggling with the safety thing from the get-go. But that being said, that was one of the biggest pushes to have this meeting. It was a good thing to have this meeting just to get the other information as fast as possible. You know.
Is there absolutely no alternative way in through that property for you?
That's correct.
That's it? It's the only way in?
With the chair's permission, I'm going to respond even though your hearing's closed. That's correct. And in addition, it's important to keep in mind that we don't need a string of easements, we just need one easement. And that easement will be shown on a plan and it'll be recorded at the registry. That's the easement that gets us from Ward Street down to the Cobb property. The Cobb property is going to be purchased by the landowner.
Has been already.
Pardon me?
Has been already.
Has been, has been purchased. Okay? And then below that is the site that's owned by the property owner. So the only area, although the, the distance from Ward Street to the site may be X number of feet, the easement is only half that until you get to property that's owned by the owner of the project site. And I would add as well that none of the emergency service departments, I believe, that have commented on this, including fire, police, or ambulance have expressed, to my knowledge, a concern about the safety of access to and from the site. But I can assure you that the portion of it that is owned by Edgewood Boggs, which is the portion that has frontage on Ward Street, that will be depicted by an easement. The easement will be recorded together with a, a plan. And we're more than happy to have a condition that states that the sufficiency of that easement for emergency service purposes needs to be confirmed by police and fire. Because that's the umbilical cord on which the project hangs.
Mr. Chair, thank you for that information. It's good to know that then other parcels were purchased.
Right. If you look at the colored assessors plan that I have here, it's the orange that's owned by Edgewood, the yellow that was acquired from Cobb, and the green is the project site. And the purple will be joined with the green and the middle line, as you know, will disappear. So the only portion on this plan over which the easement sits is the orange.
So this is a discussion, right?
Yes.
So the accountability is actually on the Fire Department going and saying that they can bring their equipment in there safely on this easement. But if they are saying that they can add to what's already there now as a condition to assure safe travel in and out of there above and beyond what we already have, is that something that can be conditioned?
Well, you can certainly have the condition that the easements be recorded and the pen's admitted to you. No problem about that. The Fire Department has, is on your record as saying that they are okay with the plans. They are not the special permit granting authority. You are. So they can, they are on your record as saying that they're fine, but you have to, it's your vote, you have to be fine.
I understand that. So we could vote on this tonight? Or we could wait, although we had the special meeting and then we could go on to our discussion? We can't come back to this after we've, we'd have to end this tonight and we would.
The special permit? You can tape, you can table, the hearing's closed and you have 90 days to make a decision. So you can table this and you can bring it back for this.
90 days back to when, though?
From today, from the close of the hearing.
But when, but when we end.
But when, but when we end this, this will be the end of it for tonight?
Yes. I mean, it should be, yeah. So this is, this is the opportunity for you to talk about the special permit as long as you want tonight. If you are ready to vote and you want to vote, you have that option. If you're not ready to vote, you don't have to, you have time and you can, you can bring it back on a future agenda for more discussion and decision.
How does everybody feel? Do they, they want to vote on this tonight? Do you want to think about this tonight? And then we could.
I'll wait to hear from my other board members. Mr. Chair, do you, I, I got to ask the question. Do we know the approximate length of the, the only easement that's outstanding?
From here to here, do you have a dimension here? Just one second.
Thank you.
Approximately eight hundred feet. If we looked at the large plan set, we could probably get a better number, but looking at the scale, the existing roadway over the Edgewood Boggs parcel is approximately eight hundred feet.
Thank you.
So that's the total length of the easement from the street to the site?
No, that's the total length of the easement over the Edgewood Boggs site. The total length of the, of the distance from our, our fence, our access gate to Ward Street is, like Mr. Serkey said, probably about two and a half times that. So somewhere in the, in the realm of two thousand feet. And that's over existing, existing dirt roadways that have been used during the Cranberry Farming operation for many years.
And this in red is the area of the easement over the Edgewood Boggs, this being Ward Street. Then you get off the copy that's formed by the project owner, that was acquired at the Cobb. And, and these two parcels are also owned by, this is under agreement to be bought and this is already owned by Cedar Meadow Cranberry Inc. So Cedar Meadow, Cedar Meadow, Cedar Meadow, Cedar, Cedar Meadow, and this is Cedar. This is, this is from here to here. This is H C two one.
This is the detail of the access from Ward Street to the bend to there's the, the area where we move on to the Cobb parcel.
It's a proposed forty foot access and utility easement.
So it's forty foot wide?
Forty foot wide.
The only other thing I would add is that as a substantive matter, whether Borrego has the right by easement to travel over the forty foot wide access easement or whether they own the land is a difference, is a distinction that perhaps doesn't have much of a meaningful difference as long as it has the absolute right to use the easement and to improve and maintain and replace whatever is there as needed. So I guess we could consider these things. We could vote on this tonight, we could wait, think about it.
In light of what I've heard, I'm closer to saying it's good for me. Because the, the other parcels land are owned by the, the owner of the, the development. Except for that eight hundred feet.
So I, I think that for what the planning board has to look at, our jurisdiction here is that what I see, you know, what we have to look at tonight, I think I'm satisfied in what I see for what we have to look at. That's the way I feel. I don't know how anybody else feels.
The additional information with, with the other parcels being owned by the developer helped immensely for me.
Not to mention, can't we ask for some kind of condition based on that easement?
We can put that in our, in our conditions, in our role. We can, we can put all that in there. You know, you're talking eight hundred feet, not that far.
Less than three football pitches.
Yeah.
All right, so we do have, Marlene has a draft that a decision.
Do we have to do the, oh, we can just add it. Never mind, answer my own question. I answer my own question.
You can change this any way you want. There is a, there is a condition for the easements, but you can certainly change it.
Okay, so I'll read the, read the motion and then we can vote to, or do we have to uh, vote to approve this? Or, well, we should read the conditions before we do that.
Yeah, so what I recommend that you do is make the motion, see if anyone wants to second it, see if anyone wants to amend it, and then call for the vote and see if it passes.
And then we'll read the draft.
I'll make a motion to.
Did you have a draft? Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve a special permit for Borrego Solar Systems nineteen C Ward Street.
Oh, no, this is the motion.
Yeah, I wasn't going, oh, this here?
Yeah.
Oh, I got you.
After motion.
I'll make, that the planning board ought to approve the special permit and site plan review application for Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. for a two point seven seven zero point five six kilowatt solar array located at the rear of nine Ward Street as shown on the plans entitled special permit in NOI plan nineteen C, as in Charlie, Ward Street, Carver, Mass. zero two three three zero, two point seven seven zero point six five, two thousand? What did I say wrong?
Not two point, it's, it's in kilowatt, not, not watts.
Thank you. Um, DC rated solar electric system prepared by Borrego Solar, Inc., dated March thirty first, two thousand sixteen, last revision July first, two thousand sixteen, scaled one inch to sixty feet with the fallen findings and conditions. That's my motion.
Second that.
Well, no, I, I mean, really, I recommend you read the whole thing.
Okay.
And then, and then, yes, and then, and then add and delete as you want.
All right. So it's all right to second it and then read it? I guess, I guess Will will continue.
I'll continue.
The motion.
Findings, the, the planning board held special, held public hearings for the above referenced plan under section twenty two thirty, use regulations thirty five eighty, large, large scale ground mounted solar photonic installations and fifty three hundred special permit of the Carver zoning bylaw on May twenty fourth, June twenty eighth, and July fifth, two thousand sixteen. The board finds that the benefits of the proposal outweighs any detrimental impacts on the town or the neighborhood, excuse me, in the view of particular characteristics of the site pursuant to sections thirty five eighty and fifty three hundred of the, of specific criteria found therein. The applicant intends to install eight thousand six hundred and fifty eight solar panels, thirty three inverters, one transformer and sort of racking fencing and site access driveways. The board finds that the annual, that an annual inspection protocol received with the application, application materials to be adequate and will require a signed copy of the conditions below. Furthermore, the, the board has reviewed in the decommissioning estimate provided by the applicant. The estimate, the estimate shall be increased by a hundred and twenty five percent in accordance with section thirty five eighty dot fifty three per condition number four below. The board understands that the independent review and approvals have been granted by the Carver Conservation Commission for work within its jurisdiction, along with two variances granted by the Carver Zone of Appeals for the reduction of the sideline setbacks from two hundred foot to one hundred and thirty feet and the, and the reduction of minimum frontage from one hundred and fifty foot to zero. Accesses provided to the site via an existing network of Cranberry Bog access easements. One second. The site is located approximately a half mile off of Ward Street. The board shall require copies of the easements per condition number six below. Two sixteen foot wide vehicle gate, gates shall be installed for emergency access as shown on the above plan. The gates shall be equipped with the Carver Fire Department padlock or a super key, super key safe shall be provided per, per this Carver Fire Department referral dated February nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, in the condition below. The applicant, yep?
That date needs to change, I'll get you the correct date.
Okay. The application shall provide, the applicant shall provide the Carver Board of Selectmen with an annual report certifying compliance with the operation and maintenance plan and provide annual generation of the facility in accordance with section thirty five eighty dot forty three. Finally, due to the proximity of the project to Plymouth Municipal Airport, the applicant has provided the board with a solar glass study dated June twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen. The study has been reviewed by the airport manager and the board has received correspondence back from the airport stating that the project should not have a negative impact on the operations of the airport. Conditions. Prior to the insurance of a building permit, a true copy of, of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of D's shall be submitted to the board. Number two, the plan must be constructed as approved. Any revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of its decision. Number three, prior to the insurance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide the board with a copy of the annual site inspection protocol sheet that has been signed by the Director of Operations and Maintenance. Number four, prior to the insurance of electrical permit, the applicant, applicant shall provide the board with a decommission bond in the amount of one thousand eight dollars and thirty s, one thousand eight and thirty seven dollars to run with the life of the project.
That's a hundred and eight thousand.
Yeah, I'm all right.
And it's issuance.
Thank you. The applicant, number five, the applicant is responsible for the proper operations and, and maintenance of, of the site. During the construction, sedimentation, soil erosion controls shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction. Furthermore, the silt fence proposed along the entrance driveway shall be extended per Fosse and O'Neal's referral.
I'm sorry, strike that last sentence. I'm sorry. Furthermore, just dust control is required during construction period. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so the, the furthermore you're striking?
Yes.
Okay. Number six, prior to the final close of the electrical permit, the applicant shall supply the board with the recorded copies of the access and utility easements required over the land of others. Number seven, the gates shown on the above reference plan shall be installed under the direction of the Carver Fire Department and shall be equipped with a Carver Fire Department lock or super key safe. Number eight, the applicant shall, shall provide the board of selectmen with six copies of the annual report required under section thirty five eighty dot forty three. Said report shall be delivered within forty five days of the end of the calendar year. Number nine, a complete signed package of the project shall be delivered to the Building Commissioner prior to the insurance of a building permit. No additional signed review is required by the planning board. Number ten, any outstanding balance of the review and inspection deposit shall be paid prior to the insurance of cer- certificate of use occupancy. Any appeal of this decision must be filed pursuant master and law chapter forty A, section seventeen, and shall be filed within twenty days of the following of this decision with the town clerk.
And the correct date on the first page for the prior department referral is, is May nineteenth?
Can I just check the dates of the prior hearings, Marlene?
Yeah.
My, my records indicated that it started on May twenty four.
Yeah.
Then June fourteen, then June twenty eighth, and then tonight.
Okay, I, I missed the fourteenth?
And, and the only other comment, I think you need to put in some reference to site plan approval as well.
So that would be, so let, we would do that in the first paragraph of the findings. And that would be. That would be, so section twenty two thirty, use regulations, section thirty one hundred, site plan review, then section thirty five eighty and fifty three hundred. I'd recommend that we add that there.
So Will's read the motion. Is there anything anybody else wanted to add to that? All set. We've added everything that we talked about.
I think the easements were covered, right?
Yeah, easements are in condition number six. So supply the board with recorded copies of the access and utility easements required over the land of others.
So we have a motion. It's been revised. We have a second.
I believe I seconded that.
Oh, did you? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Unanimous. Thank you very much. You may, Mr. Serkey, you may want to stay for the second part of it. We're going to have a discussion about, well, we'll, we'll talk about that. Sure. When it comes to our, our next item. It's going to affect this. All right, we've, so we've, so now we're going to have a discussion in, this is, is on the same topic. But it's a discussion about the variance granted by the ZVA for frontage and sideline setback for the proposed Borrego solar array at nineteen C Ward Street.
Mr. Chair, if I may, not being able to read their decision or anything, I think we ought to be cautious on the road that we. we ought to be cautious on the road that we walk on this. I understand that, from what I've been told, that they've approved the frontage, they've eased, variance, and they've approved the side, sidelines variance, but I haven't read their decision yet. So I think, without getting into great detail about that, I'd like to read their, their decision. I have a, I have problems with what they've granted, so that's my input for right now, being cautious.
Can we be more, can we just do, can I say something generally about why we feel this?
Yeah, of course.
I mean, I, I know that, you know, other members of the board may be, you know, wondering what's going on. We did, we just did approve the solar, solar system, but as we looked at this from the very beginning, we were concerned about the parcel not having any frontage. That was one of the concerns. There was two concerns here. There was the setback for the solar array panel and also that the parcel had no frontage. That was not under our control. We didn't have any control. That went to the ZBA. ZBA has, has, has said that it's okay to, to use this lot without frontage, without setback. So, you know, we, I looked at this and was concerned that having something like this happen might, you know, set a precedent. Or do you think?
I think this, this is where I'm coming from. We worked very, very hard and listened to this community about the solar bylaw and the setbacks were very, very, very detailed and many meetings on getting to that two hundred foot setback. When the town looked for it, looked, looked for us to, you know, would you consider not allowing us to encroach a little bit on a different thing? We said no, because it was very adamant that the community in the whole was very adamant that they wanted to maintain that two hundred foot setback. That's a problem for me. I don't know where the criteria meets for them or what the ZBA looked at. That's why I want to read their decision. That's their domain, so I want to make sure that I'm okay with that. As far as taking a non-buildable lot and giving them frontage, I have a huge problem with that, and that is just setting a precedence for anybody who has a lot of property in this community that doesn't have proper frontage and say it's okay. Go to ZBA and you'll be all right. What's, what are we saying? I just, I want to read their decision. I think that we should be very cautious. We have zoning bylaws that we have to abide by and go by. Understand under certain, certain conditions, people can come in and, you know, ask for variances. That's why this is UVA. But I have a real problem with how they got there to issue those two variances, dying to read their, read their decision.
If I may, I completely agree with Will. I absolutely do. I couldn't have said better myself. It's exactly the same way I feel about that.
So the ZBA has, decision hasn't been recorded yet or?
Not yet. So they have fourteen, just like you, they have fourteen days to file their decision with the town clerk. They're, they're still operating within that timeframe, but it, it has not been filed yet. And then once it is filed, then that, from the date it's filed, there, that starts the twenty day appeal period clock.
So they've approved it, just haven't filed it?
Yeah, so they took their vote, but they haven't filed their decision yet. So just like with us sometimes, you know, it, sometimes it takes some time to get everybody's signature on it and to file it, so they're still in that period.
So I just, I, I really wanted to have the discussion and let you guys know where, where I'm at with that. You know, the community was very vocal on, on that solar bylaw. So I'd be interested to see what the decision, how they came up with granting those two variances.
My concern, when I was thinking about it this week, was if you grant this site with no frontage and it, and twenty years from now, that solar panel field isn't going to be there, or twenty or thirty years from now. It's a while, it's a ways down the road. Then what? Does it become a buildable lot? Can somebody use it for some other purpose where, other than what it's being used for now?
No. This is, this is a variance for a particular use.
Well, I guess that's what we'd have to see in the decision of the ZBA. So that was our concerns and that's, that's why I asked you to, to stay.
I'm glad I did.
Sit with us. So I think it is wise, so could we continue this discussion after we do have the ZBA's decision so that we could read it and maybe further discuss and see which way we want to go with this?
I think that after, I, I'll, I'll say this, Mr. Chair. After I read their decision, I will probably request through Marlene to you to set a special meeting for us to discuss it.
Let me know when I'll be there, too.
I mean, not, not to say that this is a bad project. It's, I mean, the project is good, what the benefits to the town, but it's just, it's, it's just those, those two things that we just discussed here, that it's just hard for the planning board to, to get through that, you know, it's just.
Or do we have to change our zoning bylaw? How's that? It's just one of those things. I thank you for having this on the agenda.
All right. I, just if I, from the peanut gallery, the idea of two hundred feet from a sideline, regardless of what's on the other side of the sideline, is something, in my opinion, that ought to be tweaked, because I think.
You've heard that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the framers of the bylaw were concerned about houses on the other side of that line, and if there were houses on the other side of that line, there would have been no application for a variance because we knew what the result would have been.
Yep. The one who, one who chaired that bylaw committee.
Oh, yeah.
It was fun, to say the least.
Well, thank you for, again, for having this session.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, on other business, we have planning board member notes. Anyone have anything that?
I've got nothing.
Anything else? Hope everybody had a good fourth. Next minutes, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Looked pretty thorough to me.
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so our next meeting will be July twenty-sixth. Right, this, you know, this meeting was a special meeting, but July twenty-sixth will be a, a regular meeting.
Unless we ask for a special one, but that'll be through Marlene.
We almost had a, another special one, but we didn't do, we didn't go that way. I don't know if we could do too many more special ones.
It'll be solely just to discuss the decision.
Now, do we, do we have to have a special meeting for that discussion or could we include that, or do you think that the discussion would be so intense that it would overtake?
So if it's, so if, say that the ZBA files, I'm just thinking of the timeline, by Friday? They have twenty days, right?
You have twenty days.
Oh, so I see, I see. We could still do it on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we could still do it twenty-sixth.
Add it to the agenda, correct?
We have twenty days from them filing or twenty days from their decision?
From filing with the town clerk. You have twenty days.
And are they under some type of jurisdiction which they have to have it filed by a certain amount of time?
They have fourteen days.
That would be when?
Thursday, I believe, is, Monday was a holiday, Monday was a holiday, though, so Friday, Friday would be, Monday won't count.
Right.
Because, so.
So it's a.
Friday.
Calendar day.
So, so could we put that on a next agenda, discuss some possible vote for action or whatever?
Yep.
Thank you.
Are we there? It's, it's posted.
Yep, want to make sure.
And we won't have to have a special meeting and it'll still be within our twenty day, within the twenty day appeal period.
So it's not, the only thing I'll, the only thing I'll say is it's not, you don't have twenty days to decide. You have twenty days to file an appeal. So if you vote that you do want to appeal, you need to give then council time to actually file it within, within the twenty days.
That's going to give two days for council to do that. We're going to have another meeting.
Yeah.
So.
Is it five business days or?
So it's not, it's not, no, it's, it's calendar days.
Oh, okay. So it's the twenty-eighth, which is two days after the twenty-sixth.
Right. So it would be cutting it close.
That ain't going to work. You guys have to meet earlier to discuss it.
Oh, why don't we just meet every day from now till we make a decision?
We, we used to meet every week.
I know, I'm just thinking this is our, this is the big vacation week.
Yeah, so that, there is going to be some problems because Jim's out the week of the eighteenth, is that right?
I am out. Well, definitely the nineteenth.
Definitely on the nineteenth. Are you here the other times that week, other days?
It can be.
Possibly, okay. I get back, I'll be back on the thirteenth, so I'm, I miss, I'm not going to be, actually, I think my flight lands on the, I think my flight lands in the morning of the twelfth, so I could probably get back for the twelfth, as long as I don't have any delays.
Then we give it at least the thirteenth.
You don't want to even go there.
Yeah. So let's give us Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the following Monday, so.
Yeah.
That should be plenty of.
So the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, or eighteenth?
Thirteenth would be no good for me.
Is the fourteenth a Tuesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. So the twelfth would technically be the next Tuesday night?
The twelfth would be the Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
But you're not around.
Yeah, but you're just getting back.
Because she's not getting in.
I'm getting in that day.
Can we set it for tentatively if she makes it in based on that?
You can, yeah, I mean, we can post the meeting and if there's thunderstorms in Chicago, we can always cancel it, but.
Or can you do that by?
Well, I'm.
That thing that I did from Hawaii?
Remote participation, so I'm not a board member. You guys can meet without me. You can also meet with council here, so you don't, I don't count as a quorum or, you know, I'm not a board member.
Like to keep you in the loop.
So we can, we can schedule it for the twelfth.
And you say you thought you'd be back, but in the morning?
I think my flight gets in around eleven.
Oh, okay.
So by seven o'clock, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, you're going to run home to run back here?
Yeah, and the thirteenth, not good for you, Will?
No, I can meet the fourteenth at five.
Fourteenth or fifteenth, Thursday or Friday?
I could do either of those. I'm good there.
I could never do a Friday. I don't even, I mean, I already gave up half these months of work today to come home, shower, and be present, so.
True.
I'm not really warm and fuzzy on a Friday afternoon. I suppose if I had to.
Oh, I agree with that.
Cut short on a Thursday, I would. Would you guys meet at seven or would you want to meet at five?
We don't have to have it at five, right?
We can meet at whenever you want.
See, I feel like I'm the problem. I, I don't want to meet till seven, you know, the later the better for me.
Yeah, whatever time you want to meet is fine.
I understand that, too.
Can we schedule the twelfth at seven and we'll see if we can pull it off?
Twelve at seven.
Twelve at seven?
The later the better for me, but I don't want to be the one that causes everybody else to have to.
You're okay.
Piggyback on that.
All right. And that's a.
That's a Tuesday.
That's Tuesday. That's bad, but you're coming back that day and.
It's okay. It's okay.
Okay.
That's the only thing on the agenda, though.
That'll be the only thing on the, I, like, I won't be able to be prepared for, to do a meeting. It'll just be, when the decision's filed, I'll have, you know, I'll get a copy, I'll send it out, I'll have the staff send it out to everyone. You'll have it in advance and that's what you'll be talking about.
So definitely has to be filed by this Friday, correct?
They have to file there.
So we'll definitely have it from before Tuesday, that's what.
Yeah.
You'll be emailing it as soon as you get it, their, their decision findings?
So seven o'clock on July twelfth, the only item on the agenda is further discussion about the granting of the variance.
Make a motion to set a planning board meeting for July twelfth at seven PM.
I'll second that.
And I'll post that today before I go.
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion and a second. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Will, I was not correcting you. I just thought it was a good idea.